Good morning. So my name is Michelle Maloney and I just want to briefly talk. My title is Bio-Regional Approaches to Ecological Law and Governance, but I'll talk a little bit about the Australian Earth Laws Alliance work as an example of a group that's very interested in implementing both earth jurisprudence and core principles and elements and possibilities within ecological law and governance space. So the Australian Earth Laws Alliance is a not-for-profit organisation set up in 2012 by a group of environmental lawyers. We're very inspired, or in fact the entire organisational structure was inspired by Thomas Berry's book, The Great Work: Our Way Into the Future. We have a multidisciplinary focus and our mission basically is to try to shift our governance systems, so law, economics, education and ethics, from a human-centred worldview to an earth-centred worldview. Are you okay? Can I keep going? Can anyone see my slides?
Yeah, we're having trouble making the Zoom thing full screen.
Okay, well, so long as I can see. I was just showing where I live. So I'm based in Brisbane, for anyone who knows Australia. That's one of the warmer places, that's where I live. And we work nationally with projects around Australia. So Jeff has very kindly given a full framework of some of the issues within ecological law and governance, particularly some of his tables are really helpful to articulate what ecological law is trying to look at and achieve compared to what many of us call more traditional environmental law. Earth jurisprudence, the emerging theory of earth-centred governance for humanity, calls for us to shift from our human-centred pro-growth mentality to a deeper recognition, and perhaps some would say returning to the recognition that we are simply interconnected members of our community. And as I often say in my lectures with my students and my community workshops, if you look at the image on the left and think about our governance system, which prioritises humans and often the male over the female, you can kind of see where some of our legal system and some of our priorities towards private property and ownership nature come from. Whereas if you actually look at the image on the right-hand side and acknowledge that we have no greater right to be here on this planet than any other organic species or rock or mountain, then you actually can design a very different way of governing. But that's a philosophical question that is wonderful when you have more time. What I'm going to jump into is just to share with you a little bit of the work we do and focus on one of our programmes in response to The Great Work. And just to recap, for those who don't know, in Thomas Berry's book, The Great Work, he basically looks at the undercurrent structures of western or industrialised society and suggests that some of the core establishments that control human affairs, including law and government, economics, education and religion, are predominantly anthropocentric, growth-focused, materially growth-focused. And he calls for shift. Now, what we were very interested in is the rather lovely mix of culture-trained work that needs to be done to help the society rethink its place in the world. So the five core themes that we have, only one of them is actually focused on law. We're very interested in changing the culture, reconnecting governance and law with, as we just shorthand have said, what matters. We build community capacity, more so than state-focused laws. And I'll get onto that. We're very focused on creating alternatives because a lot of times people can barely even imagine a different system. A quote we often refer to is "the last thing a fish will ever notice is water", the last thing many of us in industrial societies really notice are the undercurrent systems or the coding of our system. Within each of those themes, we've got a range of work. We have a strong cross-cultural focus with our indigenous indigenous nations colleagues and a whole range of science, because spirituality, ethics, law and other projects. But the one that I'm going to just quickly mention, if you can even see my screen, certainly in your face, it's the Bio-Regional Project that we've been working on. As I mentioned, one of the big things that the Australian Earth Laws Alliance is interested in is alternatives. What we see at the moment is a crisis, an ecological crisis that's in particularly Australia, but also the US and many other countries. For whatever reasons, governments are in almost complete denial about the ecological crisis. Governments, state-centered policies, corporate back behaviour, laws that affect corporations are not taking much of any of the new changes we have to make. So what we're very interested in is how we build new models that are so interesting and so exciting to people that they actually start to shift towards that. Because at the moment, Australia, we definitely cannot rely on our lawmakers to change the system yet. But we believe that with a couple more years, we'll be getting in the right direction. So very quickly, the Green Print's approach is what I would call a pilot project. We're very interested in how we shift the current pro-growth legal and economic system to help us live within our ecological limits. And the reason we're interested in this is obviously, as you all know, climate change, biodiversity loss, land clearing, all of these symptoms of consumption and production patterns. And if we could actually rethink that, what we discover is most modern industrial societies literally have no sense of tools to help us live within our limits. If you apply compassion to the problem, for hundreds of years, our cultures, mine, white collar culture in Australia and other places, is totally a belief that we can keep growing forever. Our accounting systems and taxation systems, our planning and development systems, nothing is clear to actually live within our ecological limits, except ad hoc situations of quality stake on fish or other things. So this was the problem that we started thinking about from Earth jurisprudence or ecological law point of view. We nicknamed it Green Print's because what we sort of said to people was, while we have long had blueprints to document the design of buildings and engineering projects, and although sustainable development as a theory is meant to be looking at these things, we have literally never had systems imposed upon our societies that help us live within our ecological limits. So how do we do that? What does that look like? What type of process does that involve? And again, because of Ayla's focus and our reality of changing law in this country is slow and tedious, what we wanted to do was set up a project that's created by and designed for civil society action first, where people are inspired to show and tell how amazing systems change can happen. So Green Print's is kind of cool because it weaves together many of the other tools that are out there. Everything from industrial ecology to ecological footprint system, to different kinds of measuring success, changing the G D P, the other stuff. Takes into account boundaries, scenario planning, a whole bunch of stuff which I don't have the time to talk about. But what I do have is some little graphics to quickly show you the basic approach. The basic approach is not revolutionary in its nest of sustainability. But what's really interesting is how we're doing it, the communities we're working with, and the mapping tool that we're using to really empower people to understand what's going on in their bio-region. So our starting point was, how do you set limits? At what scale? This is critically important, and I really like when Jeff talks about ecological law versus environmental law, is this idea of scale. And even in Australia, we still have a lot of environmental NGO that's constantly looking at government at a pretty high level to change laws that will magically transform our society. And it's not going to happen. We no longer have governments, we're committed to it, they won't give us resources, they don't give us enforcement. In Australia, our federal laws are particularly extreme. What we're really interested in, this is the form where I work with our indigenous colleagues, is much more of a return to some kind of custodial obligation, some kind of relationship-based commitment to caring for the local environment. And if you actually push back at, particularly in Australia, I've noticed in Australia, the British legal system that was imposed, it's got some serious problems in terms of scale. But so for us, the scientists tell us that bio-regions are ruby. And the reason bio-regions are ruby is that they are nature's way of telling us what's going on in the place and what it needs to be ecologically comfortable. It's not about starting with a human vision for what we want. It's what does this biological area actually look like? What's its composition? What's its soil, its geology? Bio-regions are a nicely established space of scientific exploration and work and analysis. Some of our institutions in Australia refer to them and connect to them a little bit. So very quickly, through my images, Australia has 89 bio-regions. We also have sub-regions. And if you see the red circle, it's just to show you through a simple graphic overview the approach that we need to take within the Green Print's programme. So for a lot of people, and this is particularly responding to the call of what Thomas Berry refers to as jurisprudence, most people in industrial societies aren't that connected to their local environment. Even environmentalists often don't know the plants, the trees that are in their area. So one of the first steps in our workshops around Green Print's is, let's talk about your bio-region. Where are you? What is this place? And there's lots of different knowledges and ways of looking at it for both western science, indigenous knowledge, historical information, and very importantly, love. We are crazy lawyers who talk about love of the place. I'm out of time, but one more minute, I'm done. Then we actually look at what ecological health can look like. That explores, again, different kinds of knowledge, different kinds of benchmarks for restoration. But if we look back and we have maps that show what used to be here before in English Invasion, that's a nice starting point. And then the great acceleration from the 1950s comes from these different maps that show the different states of the bio-region across time and what it looks like today. Then we start to play with different scenarios. Some areas in Australia have had extreme vegetation clearing for agricultural purposes, and it's been devastating to land and water. So it's actually, in some places, it's very easy to look at different scenarios and say, business as usual, going to end up with very little soil quality and very little water, very few humans. But other scenarios take this somewhere else. Now, what's also really important about our approach is it brings in the new economy work that we've been doing. So we're redesigning human activities based on bio-regional health. And that's really empowering for people throughout mapping systems. They can literally go down to the minutiae of what's going on in different places and talk about how they could do things differently within and understand ecological health. Economic transition issues are critical, and this is what's getting us a lot of traction. A couple of local councils have invited us to come in and talk to folks. We've got the two pilot projects, one of them is at the bottom of Australia and one of them is at where I live. And by actually being clever and incorporating a whole new way of looking at economic activity, people are really excited about this kind of approach. Now, where the heck does the law come into all of this? Well, the something, and one of the, I guess, points of difference with our work compared to some newly scientific-based work, we don't stop at the idea of, well, what does the future of ecological health look like? We move into deep economic analysis, come back out the other side and say, okay, if you put a couple of scenarios that are better than where we're going now, how do we retrofit the current legal system for some of that? And how do we go further than that and redesign the entire system? That's when it gets kind of fun and radical. But we've also got some really nice connecting points to the existing legal system. We've got some planning law experts who can literally, I'd often think, that is unplugging the heart, pulling it out, having a heart transplant, plugging it back into the bigger system and having to acquire a book of this stuff. So that's pretty much all I wanted to talk about with Green Print's. We see it as a pathway for the work that we're doing. And as I mentioned, we're doing a really powerful mapping tool, which I'm personally really excited about because so many communities don't actually know what's going on in their area. And we think of this as citizen governance, as a match, as a sign. So we also do works of nature stuff, a lot of work with our Aboriginal colleagues. We have also just the beginning of an amazing new economy network in Australia to dabble into ecological law and governance. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle, for jumping in. We're finally getting to technical issues.
Did anybody see my pretty slides and the graphics?
We did see your slides, and we're even recording this session now. So planets are aligning, and thanks for, again, all of you for hanging in with us.
And Jeff, if anyone has questions, they're welcome to email me. I may not be able to stay on here for two hours because I actually have to take my daughter to a school event. It's Saturday morning here, but we have things to do from 7.30. So just letting you know. Happy to chat to anyone in the future. Thank you.
Enjoy your day. And if people else have questions from Michelle who are online, please send them in the chat function. And also, if you could, you'll see a link in the chat function for a Google box where we're asking you to just sign in with your contact information. And so please check that out. So I'd like to turn it over now to Ivan Vargas.
Gracious of you to be here with us and share these thoughts about ecological law. And I hope I can bring attention to some of the themes that are currently developed, start to develop in this emergent rethinking of governance and legal institutions. So let's see how that goes. So the title of my presentation is Creating Legal Concepts with Plants: Legal Cosmologies for Post-Statistician Transformation. So this painting is by Donabel Rodriguez. He's a traditional healer, a botanist and an indigenous artist from the Ngunnja community in the Colombian Amazon. He's also well-known as the plant's public notary because of his detailed graphic documentation of Amazonian plants. His paintings, and I want to claim, are not to be considered as an aesthetic addition to my presentation, but they are expressions of indigenous legal protocols of interdependence in their own right. So it should be considered as legal documents as well, and I will explain that later. So I think a fundamental question when we do any kind of intellectual endeavour, when it's in public, when it's an act of sharing, it's starting by positioning oneself. So I position myself as a mestizo, a male person and an unmodern-minded legal person from Latin America who grapples with learning experiences and environments that are cutting across race, place, class and intellectual difference. Well, as a privileged mestizo scholar from the global south, my current locus of pronunciation is the global north, where we are standing. Certainly, that determines, well, the cognitive, emotional, ethical and aspirational geographies of my thinking and my learning. And I often exercise this self-reflexive freedom when it comes to the intellectual and practical choices of my work. This is to say that I've been influenced by various expressions of the Western canon, but also internal critiques, but also very much of what I do to think about ecological law comes from indigenous legal traditions. And my take on indigenous legal traditions is by way of engaging with them through plants, for instance, and I will expand on that. On a foggy night of October 15, 36, coming from an expedition through the Ordinoco River, conquistador Federman's troops retreated in fear of what they saw through the mist while surveying the Andean paramos of Sumapaz. From a nearby plateau, bayway is slowly descending clouds. The Spaniards were able to describe what looked like thousands of men wearing prior light guns and feather headdresses across several acres of winding hills. As the freezing wind of the Andes slipped through their bodies by hundreds of miniskilled racers, a shivering soldier dropped his vaginit on the ground. A frightened captain managed to drink the last gulp of whisky from his corroded flask as Federman, the conquistador, gathered his mid recovery, giving the unavoidable order to retreat. What did the Federman soldier see through the fog? Well, they see this. Famished and urgently outnumbered, the Spaniards feared what they, the Spaniards feared what they believed were hundreds of merciless savages in the distance, ready to defend their land. Well, my question is, did the soldiers see a human crowd as they surveyed the terrain? In this scene, the Spaniards were convinced that they were standing before hundreds of enemy lines in the distance. In fact, according to Andean northern renditions of Amazonian vegetal life, the group of plants called Frylejon, this species of plant, Laps pelletia, acquired their name as a result of their perceived similarity with a friar walking partially hidden by the fog. Precisely, Federman's withdrawal occurred thanks to the perspective that rendered visible an army of shrubs, of shrubs, sorry, an army of humans instead of an army of shrubs or an army of trees, if you will. So my question is, is such an episode a matter of representation, is a matter of cultural belief of we are actually before an entirely different reality? So this story of deterrence and survival in northern Andes suggests the ontological boundaries between living entities can be quite bearing conditions of extortion, hunger and fear of the unexpected. The possibility of vegetal deterrence, that's it, plants influencing human behaviour, might well be a literary trope to expose a productive misrepresentation. When reality becomes a matter of distance and proximity, humans, us, can truly see members of their own species concealed as Frylejones, as plants. While despite this explanation, narratives of misperception of reality or cultural belief do not seem to foreclose other ways of understanding and analysing such instances of plant-human relations. And I want to make the case that this is relevant for the law. So what is this? In the interfluent between the Caqueta and the Putumayo rivers in the Colombian Amazon, the Murui communities use the coca leaf as a tool, among others, for promoting productive conversations amongst community members. I'll see the future of any kind of gathering of the type that we are witnessing here as also opening up room for conversation with plants or other beings. And we are doing that through food, so acknowledgement of that, it's also very important for my argument. So going back to this, this plan is very important for making also decisions that affect communities' wellbeing. The local leaf, the coca leaf sweetens our words, the elders say, and lends transparency and directness to our speech. This tradition of conversing with plants for hours and hours is called manbehar, and it's a longstanding tradition among Amazonian communities in the interfluent between these two rivers. During this time, elders pass along their knowledge and the community makes decisions about nearly every aspect of social life. And in this sense, one can say that the manbe, the act of chewing the coca leaf, is a bundle of political plans. I mean, what we are witnessing here is that conversation and decision-making is rendered impossible without conversing with the plant, that is, without the act of ingesting it. So that's something different, that kind of the western idea of representing at the world that it's out there. So manbehar coca, I want to claim, is associated with the education of the body and the spirit. And on this, I'm following, of course, a well-established anthropology record which itself builds on thousands of years of this practice by elders in the Amazon. So what I'm basically getting at is that it is a learning practice and it is also a vehicle of social, political and legal life for these communities. But this is not just, you know, something that happened in the Amazon. This is something that also happened as we engage with scientific practices in the West. So bear with me with this kind of easy division between West and the rest, but just for the sake of my argument. Plants can breathe without having lungs, nourish themselves without having a mouth or stomach, stand erect without having a skeleton and make decisions without having a brain. And in this, I'm not quoting a plant scientist from Italy who actually has created this scientific practice of building not just knowledge that is relevant for science, but also how can that knowledge be translated across different domains of knowledge? Well, but this doesn't seem to be palatable for us westerners. And there are good reasons why, but we can discuss that later. So what is it that the law has to do with all of this that I'm saying? So I'm asking basically two questions here. So what do non-human beings have to do with politics and the law in this region? That's the overarching question that I'm trying to frame. And the second question is, are humans' intellectual and experiential engagements with other beings limited to the dubious epiphany that we all depend on the mineral, vegetal and animal life of the world? In other words, it's our relational engagement with other beings, plants and so on, just a matter of we needing them for us to be able to flourish as humans? Or is actually something beyond that, what I'm calling dubious epiphany, that might afford or open up space for other species to be able to speak in their own terms? So this is just a joke. I mean, let's imagine that today we are formulating the NIMIST Act of 2019. So today, it's Article 1 that says, "All of nature marches forward in legal equality with rights for all, without regard for race, creed, order, sex, lived structure or atomic number." This is just a joke, too. I'm drawing here from the saga of a well-known environmental philosopher who is mocking this idea, wait a second, the plants are just beings out there with atomic numbers and deep structures that you just render possible through practices of taxonomy and genetic analysis and all that? Well, what is clear is that constitutions and legislations around the world are rendering plants and other beings, humans, not humans, but I want to make that argument later, are rendering them legal agents and political agents in their own right. Jeff is making the case that this is just making the dualism even deeper. I don't make a different claim, but for that to be possible, we need to create and think about a different genealogy for what the rights of nature means and how it came to be in a legal document. So what is the problem? How do we change belief systems? So how do we go from thinking that plants are just vegetal entities that we can describe through our systems of knowledge to plants as social and legal agents in their own right? So what I want to claim is that, and this is true for other models in society and knowledge models, is that environmental law is actually possible in a model that renders just one reality and meaningful representations of it. So culture number one, let's say, western cosmologies say that the real is this, that what we touch, what we can describe. Culture number two can say something different. Culture number three could say something else. What I'm, my general claim has to do with ontology. My general claim here is that within this framework, which is also how environmental law is constructed, that it is just one reality and one nature. And there are different representations of it depending on the belief system that you are part of. So I see a transition happening as a result of indigenous legal traditions, indigenous scholarship infusing our ways of engaging with life and with knowledge in western systems of knowledge, including the law. So ecological law is actually taking up a different direction, in my view. This might differ a little bit from Jeff's understanding in the sense that I believe that thinking seriously with indigenous legal traditions might render life and the world plural. So the pluriverse is not just a trope. This is, the pluriverse gets possible through inaction, through, not just through representation. It gets possible through practices. So I'm just inverting the model. If here we have one nature and different cultures, what we have here is one culture shared among humans, animals, plants, spirits, which will make the argument that every single entity, living entity, is able to have culture. And I'm just drawing from a well-established anthropological record in the Amazon and elsewhere. Some of it has, is part of the so-called ontological term or the post-humanist anthropology, you name it. But what I want to claim is that this is just a way in which academia is casting what is already embedded and practiced for centuries in indigenous communities, both in the Amazon and I'm sure in Canada and the United States. Today's Canada and the United States as well. So this is kind of an intellectual west, a meeting halfway between indigenous traditions and science, if you will. So in this model, and I'm almost closing with this, this ontological model, shifting the paradigm, is saying that we have many realities that I'm here using the word of nature, many natures, multinational instead of multicultural. And what I'm saying is that we all beings share one singularity that we call culture, because every single being is able to be an agent according to this kind of paradigm shift in the model. I think that we can start seriously incorporating this concept within ecological law, but this is somewhat of a hypothesis, of course. Here, we have just a more clear understanding. I'm drawing from Cosoi, but also I'm drawing from Massimiliano Montini, a table, very interesting table, that makes the case, what is the fundamental difference between environmental law and ecological law? Environmental law being anthropocentric, ecological law being non-anthropocentric in my mind, that it will be ecocentric with the humans in it, or something else, we don't know. And these are kind of the most salient, histological and ontological differences between these two models that are important to think with. So one of them is that humans in the environmental law and governance model and nature are separate, whereas in ecological law model, the question of relationality takes hold under other characteristics, I don't think I have the time to go over that. And my particular, my contribution, which is not mine, this is actually a collective work in the Afri Program, but I'm just drawing from this collective energy to think about the law, is to think of this transition from environmental to ecological law in terms of a kind of a matrix of different aspects of what transition might look. Sorry, if we take seriously this ontological shift that I'm just describing. One of those important, you know, in the anthropology, which is the predominant worldview today or explanation of how things work, we have a one-world idea compared to a pre-reversal relational worldview, and that's somewhat general, but as we go into more specific social structures, normative structures, then different consequences emerge. So dimensions of change, worldview, ethics, power relations, knowledge-making, and so on. So what I'm just posing here is opening up the question about the tensions between representation and world-making as we think about this transition from environmental governance to ecological law. Well, thank you so much for listening.
Thanks, Ivan, for a very, very rich sort of ideas. I'm going to be scratching my head and hopefully having some good coffees and lunches with you to talk more about all that. I'd like to turn it over now to Hillary Hoffman, who will be talking about the saga of the Bears Ears Monument in Utah and how that relates to ecological law. So thanks so much for joining us, Hillary.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, I apologize, I have a little bit of a cold, so I'm sort of losing my voice, but I'm just going to do the best I can to make sure that you all can hear me and understand me. So by way of introduction, well, first of all, hello from Vermont. It's cold and rainy here, but thank you for allowing me to participate remotely. I'm a member of the faculty here at Vermont Law School, and I teach natural resources law and Native Americans and law, which is concerned with indigenous rights. So my scholarship and research kind of weaves together those two areas of law. So I've been working on scholarship and teaching around the Bears Ears National Monument for a couple of years. And two months ago, I led a group of students on a new field study course that I designed at Vermont Law School. So I took ten students from Vermont to southern Utah, and we traveled to the Bears Ears National Monument near the small town of Bluff, Utah, which is across the river from the northern boundary of the Navajo Nation. On the way down to Bluff, we passed through the small community of White Mountain, which is part of the Ute Reservation. The Ute Reservation is divided into two separate sections. On day four of the field study, we heard a talk by the former chief councilwoman of the Ute Mountain Ute Tribe, Regina Lopez White Skunk, who was part of the team that negotiated and drafted the proposal to President Obama in 2015 and 2016 to create the Bears Ears National Monument. So along with representatives from the Hopi, Zuni, and Navajo Nations, Councilwoman Lopez White Skunk drafted a seventy-page proposal detailing the various values underlying the tribes' push to create a nearly two-million-acre national monument on federal land in southern Utah. The foundation for the proposal is the 1906 Antiquities Act, which you may or may not be familiar with, but it's a very simple statute. It allows a president, by signing a proclamation, to instantly declare existing federal land as a national monument if it contains objects of scenic, historic, or scientific interest. And traditionally, this statute protected some iconic landscapes that you all are probably familiar with, like the Grand Canyon, and sites of significance to archaeologists, like Bandalier National Monument that contains a lot of archaeological sites of ancestral pueblo and communities in the Southwest. However, in the 1970s, President Jimmy Carter used the Antiquities Act for the first time to protect entire ecosystems on fifty-six million acres of land, of federal land, in Alaska. So this marked a real watershed in the history of the Antiquities Act, which to date had never been used to protect an entire ecosystem as an object of scientific interest. After President Carter's monument designations in Alaska were challenged and the courts upheld those proclamations, subsequent presidents, primarily President Clinton, President Bush Senior, and President Obama, used the Antiquities Act to protect critical ecosystems in various regions of the country and even offshore, creating our nation's first marine national monuments. So what does this have to do with ecological law? It relates in the Bears Ears to a concept called traditional ecological knowledge, which is sometimes referred to as indigenous knowledge, and I'll call it TEK. TEK is defined in various different ways, but I like this definition that is from one of the federal agencies in the United States that's worked with several tribes on co-managing natural resources. So TEK refers to the evolving knowledge acquired by indigenous and local peoples over hundreds of thousands of years through direct contact with the environment. This knowledge is specific to a location and includes the relationship between plants, animals, natural phenomena, landscapes, and timing of events that are used primarily for sustenance, including but not limited to hunting, fishing, trapping, agricultural uses, and forestry. TEK is an accumulating body of knowledge, practice, and belief evolving by adaptive processes and handed down through generations by oral-cultural transmission, concerned with the relationship of living beings, human and non-human, with one another and with the environment. It encompasses the worldview of indigenous people, which integrates concepts that non-indigenous cultures might label ecology, spirituality, or religion, human and animal relationships, animal husbandry, and more. Excuse me. So in proposing the Bears Ears National Monument, the five coalition tribes joined together to advocate for a monument that would include TEK in management decisions about the resources in the monument. So that would have been a historic first in the nation, along with the monument itself, which was the first tribally-proposed and created national monument. So first, the tribes went about securing the monument protection itself, obtaining President Obama's signature on the 2016 proclamation, creating the national monument. Also, the tribes secured a role in the management of the monument, convincing President Obama to establish a tribal advisory commission made up solely of members of the five coalition tribes, who were elected by each tribe to serve on this commission. And they would advise the federal agencies about individual management decisions once the monument was established. So as Councilwoman Lopez White Skunk told my class two months ago, the commission had decided to use TEK as a basis for making decisions about how to manage recreational uses and agriculture in the monument, including public lands grazing and other recreational uses. So the presidential proclamation itself notes the Bears Ears region's importance to Native Americans and particularly the coalition tribes, and details how that relationship goes back several generations. So these tribes and their members have traditionally visited the Bears Ears region for ceremonies and to perform religious rituals. Throughout the region, many landscape features, such as Comridge, the San Juan River, and Cedar Mesa, are closely tied to Native stories of creation, danger, protection, and healing. The towering spires in the Valley of the Gods are sacred to the Navajo, representing ancient Navajo warriors frozen in stone. Traditions of hunting, fishing, gathering, and woodcutting are still practiced by tribal members as is collection of medicinal and ceremonial plants, edible herbs, and materials for crafting items like baskets and footwear. The traditional ecological knowledge amassed by the Native Americans whose ancestors inhabited the region, passed down orally from generation to generation, offers critical insight into the historic and scientific significance of the area. And I would proffer that it offers the most comprehensive and thorough insight. Such knowledge is itself, as the proclamation states, "a resource to be protected and used in understanding and managing the landscape sustainably for generations to come." So as some of you may know, President Trump took office in, so President Obama created the Bears Ears in the last couple of days of his administration, in December of 2016. President Trump took office in January of 2017 and immediately set to work to essentially dismantle the monument. So he signed a proclamation in 2017 that reduced the Bears Ears by approximately ninety percent, leaving two units in place of the larger contiguous ecological, well, it was an ecosystem. It was several ecosystems, actually, that were intact, but kind of carving out these two small areas in the middle. Trump's proclamation removed the references to TEK and replaced those with language focusing on the anthropocentric values that non-indigenous groups and industries have traditionally attached to the region. So this region is really, it has a lot of mineral wealth, basically. There's oil and gas, uranium, and other minerals that lots of large companies have been after for several decades. The Bears Ears Advisory Commission was restyled as well to include some tribal members, but also one county commissioner from San Juan County, Utah, which is the county in which most of the monument is now located. So essentially, Trump dismantled the structure that President Obama created. As soon as he did that, actually on the day that he issued, that Trump issued his proclamation, the tribes, coalition tribes sued in federal court in DC to invalidate the Trump proclamation, arguing that it was unconstitutional and that it violated the Antiquities Act and that the Antiquities Act gives a president the power to create a new national monument, but it doesn't give the president the power to do what President Trump did, which is to undo a predecessor's national monument. So I see I'm close on time. So the lessons that we can take from the Bears Ears experience are numerous, but for the purposes of today's discussion, I wanted to just focus in on what I think is most exciting about the Obama monument proclamation, which is the potential for incorporating TEK into existing legal frameworks in the United States. So that's to say, this Bears Ears experiment has been a lesson in finding room within existing environmental law statutes, some of which are actually quite old. As I said, the Antiquities Act was passed in 1906, so it's been around for quite some time. But we can find some room within some of these statutes to incorporate new principles and new values, like the values that Jeff was identifying earlier in the ecological law introduction. This is possible not only in the Bears Ears, but also in other national monuments in the United States. And there's something like one hundred and fifty national monuments in the United States. Not all of them are, not all of them protect ecosystems, but for the ones that protect ecosystems as objects of scientific interest, there is the potential to add TEK and ecological law principles into the management regimes of those monuments. So the Bears Ears story is a cautionary tale for the country, but with, you know, as far as what President Trump did. But with the examples of Presidents Carter, Bush Senior, Clinton, and Obama using the Antiquities Act over the past forty years to protect ecosystems as objects of scientific interest, we can see the potential power of the Antiquities Act to serve the goals and purposes of ecological law right now, without enacting any new statutes, without coming up with any new common law doctrine, and even, you know, perhaps before we adopt some of these new frameworks that have been proposed by my co-panelists. If we had more time, I would give you some more examples of other statutes where concepts of ecological law might be folded in, as well as common law doctrines in the United States. But in the interest of time and in saving my voice, I'll hold off on that for another day. But thank you very much for your attention, and I apologize again about my voice.
I think you missed the clapping there. We all very much appreciated your talk, Hillary. I don't know if we put that in the transition box, but it is really
Yeah.
It is really good to take a deep look at an example like that. And is it true that there's been a victory in that court case?
Not as far as I know. We're awaiting the decision on the federal government's motion to dismiss the complaint, so did it come out?
I'm not sure. I thought I'd heard that a court had ruled that one of President Trump's reversal of an Obama proclamation creating a monument was not.
Oh, the Seamounts case, yeah, there's another case. And there was, I mean, it's been kind of remarkable that everything Trump has done to try to undo Obama's environmental protective mechanisms has been invalidated by courts. So there was a recent decision in Alaska, and then there was a recent one in the Seamounts case off the Atlantic coast. Is that what you were thinking?
I think probably, maybe I just, so that must give you hope in this case, then?
Yeah, one of my colleagues is keeping a tally, and I think Trump is something like three for forty-eight in the environmental cases so far, so.
A glimmer of hope, I guess. So thanks so much, Hillary. And I was remiss in letting you know, I think that Hillary teaches at Vermont Law School. Michelle Maloney teaches at Griffiths University in Australia and is also the director of the Australia Earth Laws Alliance. And Ivan and coming up, Emile, are both students in the Leadership for the Ecizoic Program at Egiel. And Professor Christiane Durani is here from the Federal University of Santa Catalina in Brazil. And our next speaker, Kyla Sperr, just finished her PhD at Ottawa University, and will tell us a little bit about that, so welcome, Kyla.
I'll share the screen. Well, I guess I'll start just by saying good afternoon and thank you, everyone, for being here. And I also want to thank, of course, Jeff for inviting me to be part of both of these discussions in general and this session in particular. So my research has been focused on exploring the main challenges and opportunities in existing laws. The main challenges and opportunities in existing laws for a shift to the new paradigm of ecological law. And I just want to, I totally agree with the Oslo Manifesto's explanation of the difference, and Jeff's explanations of the difference between ecological law and environmental law, and the characterization of what ecological law is meant to do. But I have my own working definition of ecological law, that the thinking that I'm going to share with you is based on, so I want to just share that. So I understand ecological law as an emerging approach to law aimed at constraining economic activity within ecological limits, restoring and preserving. activity within ecological limits, restoring and preserving... Sorry, restoring and maintaining ecological integrity and building and supporting an ecologically just society. So I have been looking at mining in particular, and I will try to sketch out the main elements of an ecological law framework for mining in a moment, but I will first briefly describe the two pieces of research that this thinking is based on. So the first piece is a thought experiment in which I looked at what it would actually mean to seriously apply the Earth Charter to mining. So I hope some of you will recall the Earth Charter launched in 2000 as a civil society response to the Frontland Commission's call to set new norms to guide the transition towards ecologically sustainable development. So from the two... There are many principles in the Earth Charter that flow from four overarching principles, but from the two explicitly... The two principles that explicitly refer to natural resources, we can draw essentially three overarching rules that can govern mining, and these are preventing environmental harm or causing no serious environmental damage, minimizing depletion, and protecting the rights of people. So I won't go into all the specific implications of these rules, but in a nutshell, how would we mine if we took the Earth Charter seriously? So in terms of what we mine, the Earth Charter would bar the use of extraction, the use and extraction of extremely toxic and hazardous minerals, likely with some exceptions and/or transitions for lifesaving uses. In terms of where we mine, areas that are highly sensitive or important ecologically and for livelihoods and agriculture would be off limits to mining. In terms of how we mine, harm avoidance rather than mitigation and compensation would be the norm. Now, to minimize depletion, that would mean basing what and how much is mined on the reasonable needs of living generations of humans and other beings without jeopardizing the ability of future generations of humans and other beings to enjoy similar access to those minerals. Finally, observing the duty to protect the rights of people would mean at a minimum the free prior consent of indigenous peoples for mining in their territories and also ensuring the participation of affected communities in the decisions of what, where, and how and how much to mine. So the second piece of research, well, needless to say that we didn't take the Earth Charter seriously, and that's not the kind of law that rules mining. The second piece of research was my thesis, where I examined existing laws regulating mining today in three case studies. But instead of using these EC Earth Charter rules, I used what I call the lens of ecological law, which I crafted based... Well, with three interconnected principles, and they're based on existing scholarship, primarily Jeff Garver's Rule of Ecological Law. So the three principles are ecocentrism, ecological primacy, and ecological justice. My first case study looked at the law adopted in March of 2017 that made El Salvador the first country worldwide to ban metal mining, and this was partly in light of clear evidence of the country's stressed ecological systems, especially water. The second case study looked at some aspects of the legal framework that governs proposed mining in Ontario's Ring of Fire. So this mineral-rich area is located in the traditional territories of nine Ojibwe and Cree First Nations in the far north region of Ontario, which is one of the most ecologically intact regions remaining in the world. Finally, in the third case study, I looked at Bolivia's lithium industrialization project in the context of the Rights of Mother Earth Law of 2010 and the Framework Law of Mother Earth and Living Well... Sorry, and Integral Development for Living Well, or Vive Bien of 2012, which require that mineral extraction and industrialization be carried out in harmony and equilibrium with Mother Earth, so essentially which require ecological primacy. So from these case studies, it is clear that under current mining and environmental laws, not just mining, but also environmental laws, anthropocentrism prevails, and this is true even in Bolivia, where ecocentric laws are not being applied, or at least not regarding the very nationally important lithium industrialization project. It's also clear that minerals are treated as resources and as property. Mineral extraction is given priority over other land uses. Consent from indigenous peoples and active participation by local communities are not required for mining projects. And finally, it is also clear that current laws are not concerned with what the minerals extracted are actually for, or whether we actually need it. And they certainly... These current laws certainly don't limit extraction to what is needed. It is economic growth and speculation in commodity markets that drives mining, not needs, and the law is there to facilitate this, and this is very clear in the three examples, even if one of them is banning mining. Anyway, can't get into the details. So just for example, in the Ring of Fire, the major find was a huge amount of chromite, which is used to make stainless steel and to improve the hardness of products like auto parts and appliances. So the chromite reserves in the Ring of Fire promised to satisfy North America's need for chromite for two centuries. But is it really a need? What about the Matawa First Nations in whose territories lies this chromite? Do they need the chromite? And would North America need all this chromite if it were to abandon the current trajectory of growth and instead follow the sustainable prosperity path that Peter Victor described yesterday? So I think these are all really important questions that ecological law has an opportunity to focus on. So from an ecological law perspective, mineral extraction can only be justified when there are no alternative means of satisfying basic human needs, essentially for three reasons: to minimize depletion of minerals, of course, but also because it is practically impossible to mine without causing harm to other beings, and this violates ecological justice, and because full restoration of mine sites is impossible, which also implies ecological So I have many more questions than ideas about what an ecological law framework for mining would actually look like, but we can imagine that minerals would be processed or extracted primarily for use in relation to democratically determined basic needs. They would be obtained principally from existing stocks in landfills, buildings, infrastructure, cars, through reuse, repurposing, and recycling. And those required for basic needs that cannot be obtained from these sources could be mined, but their extraction from new deposits would be permitted only exceptionally at human scales and with the strictest measures to prevent risks to health and to the environment from sites that do not have high degrees of ecological integrity and are not important for agriculture or water provisioning. I'm sorry, I forgot to put this up. And with the free prior and informed consent of indigenous peoples that extraction would affect their traditional territories, and with active participation of the community in which extraction is carried out. So just quickly, a few other questions. Another one... A major question for ecological law is what are appropriate restoration standards for the limited mining that would be allowed, but also for dealing with the large legacy of irresponsible mining. Another clear challenge is around property and access to minerals. So property rights, leases, and concession systems are major obstacles to ecological law, to an ecological law approach to mining. So the question I think is very interesting is, can minerals be reconceptualized as part of the commons rather than be treated as commodities? And how do we do that? And one final idea that intrigues me regarding the transformation of mining is Ivan Ilitch's idea of conviviality, which is being revived and adapted in the degrowth literature. Ilitch used the expression convivial tool to refer to, and I'm quoting, "use-value-oriented engineered artifacts." So an important question, I think, is whether mining could ever be driven by the use value of minerals, and there's been some fascinating work in the degrowth literature around convivial tools and convivial technologies. And I think research on the role of minerals in mining and the development of these tools and convivial tools and technologies would be really worth pursuing. Now, how that fits with ecological law, I'm not sure, but anyway, that was the last thought I wanted to leave you with. I really look forward to your questions and comments, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Carla. Carla reminds me to recall that the twentieth anniversary of the Earth Charter is actually next year, and there will be some international events to call attention to that, so that's something you may want to look for. And Kyle Boselman, who's the chair of the ALGA, the Ecological Law Governance Association, was involved in the creation of the Earth Charter. And just to let you know, there still is a lot of interest in keeping that alive, along with the rebirth of Ivan Ilitch's Tools for Conviviality, a book that I read when I was long ago in my undergraduate career. So I would like to invite Professor Christiane Gerani to come up, and we'll shift now from mining to maybe the results of mining to plastics, and what does ecological law tell us about plastics? I don't... Did you send me a recent... Can we have it tomorrow?
No.
Let's see. Zoom, folks. Yes, I guess we're still... You're still seeing this, so, all right. Christiane, please.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Jeff, for this opportunity to share with you some thoughts about ecological law. I am, I think, instinctive a philosopher, and I try to overcome this default and go into practice. So ecological law is something that I think, I think for years, and then I try to make it feasible and more concrete, so it's more personal necessity than other, any other thing. So since my research nowadays is concentrated, is coming much concentrated on plastic, so I try to link ecological law and the case of a single-use plastic. So then, to start, I'd like to share with you some questions, especially as I make myself a philosopher. How can legal system avoid mass extinction? Can it? Can law leaders to live on Earth in a different way? Is it possible such a thing as living in harmony with nature? So in order to answer possibly these questions, I propose these guiding principles here on screen. Placing human activities within the framework of ecological systems must include a transformation of systems of law and governance. And ecological limits imply social limits because they impose change on human behavior with regard to Earth's system. So I think these things were talked by my previous colleagues, and I caught here an expert at UN Environment Wildlife. She says, "Nature fares better when the people most connect to that nature. Those living with it are supported as the primary stewards." So when people benefit from biodiversity, they protect it. So this also launches a perspective that to... In order to make ecological law more concrete, it's important to go towards those cultures who respect and live better with nature because they lived for thousand years. So we are leaving our culture at most five hundred years in this way. So it means that we are not very well succeed. So and then we come to plastics, and then plastic is even much more recent. Plastics as litter or material for objects in daily life is a very recent phenomenon of sixty years at most. Global plastic production has reached three hundred twenty million tons a year. Plastic degrees threatens life and are globally produced. There may be more plastic than fish in the ocean in the near future. So in order to stop it, we need a multilevel governance guided by ecological law. From the point of view of ethics and politics aligned with the ecological law, there is an obligation to inhibit the use and production of something that is proved to destroy life. From ecological law perspective, legislative bans of plastic, packing, and single-use plastics, are required. That's no other way to think of it. So law is an instrument, and we have to play it respecting planetary boundaries and considering ourselves part of the same harmony. The classical law remedies have to be managed to restore our balanced relationship with Mother Earth. So responsibilities, prohibition, taxation, incentives, labeling could be used to promote this change of values and mindset. Ecological law is the regulation aiming at replacing human activities within the framework of nature, and there are no excuses for actions that destroy life. We have recently have contact with a report telling us that beyond the already known damage produced by plastic, there is also... Plastic also contributes paramount with climate change. As you can read here, it has just published, so by 2050, the report predicts that global price footprints will be equivalent to six hundred fifteen coal plants running at full capacity. So that's what we are producing, double problem with mining. Ecological law is the regulation aiming at replacing human activities within the framework of nature, and there are no excuse for actions that destroy life. We have recently have contact with a report telling us that beyond the already known damage produced by plastic, there is also, plastic also contributes paramount with climate change. As you can read here, it has just published. So, it's by 2050, the report predicts the global transport rates will be equivalent to 615 coal plants running at full capacity. So, that's what we are producing, double problem with mining. Well, and we know the problem, and also we know the responsible for that because there are not so many companies that produce this one-way plastic and use it. So, the thing is that our legislation is very slow in react to this, to this written situation. Recent, recently, we have two important countries making a regulation amongst plastic, but they are going to enter in force only in 2020. And I ask why? Well, in fact, a few years ago, a team of scientists and engineers speculated in a documentary series, "What Might Become of Earth If a Human Suddenly Disappeared?" They predict events beginning one day after the disappearance of a humankind 200 years into the future and explored the ways man-made structures might collapse while nature replants. The series demonstrates humankind's enormous impact on the environment and how without us, both animal and plant populations, and land and the water would thrive. However, the author demonstrates that not all modes of human life lead to such pervasive environmental degradation. In fact, the author states that regions and countries would stand to benefit from the knowledge of indigenous people and their understanding of large ecosystems. In fact, the time to include customary institutions is running out. Instead, we still make such kind of law, law as usual, to protect business as usual. Our institutions need some fresh air. Ecological law needs ecological governance, and this has to shift to another kind of democratic relationship, which certainly is different from this one. Who makes law? Who represents Earth in the legislative? So, when we say this, this numbers about lobbying for maintaining plastic, when we, when you, single-use plastic, you see how much money is expanding to keep destroying life, destroying Earth. And this is a distortion of our democratic regime. We cannot call this democracy anymore. And also, when you see government and the elections to call as a democratic way of living, we see that lobbying is all around the system and put us in a cage where we cannot go out. So, the question is, how we can improve ecological law and ecological economics in such a system like this? So, we must live on Earth differently, and that is also the target states on the SDG 12, and I quote, "We commit to making fundamental changes in the way that our societies produce and consume goods and services. Governments, international organizations, the business sector, and other non-state actors and individuals must contribute to changing sustainable consumption and production partners." So, this is a document from the UN. This is a resolution. We have to escape from this trap and really build something different. Well, then, lead us to this slide about decolonizing the legal system. Building ecological law is to decolonize the system we are used to accept. So, we have to shift, to make several shifts from individualistic profit and welfare to equitable distribution of prosperity within nations and among nations. Individual rights embedded in subservient to respect for life. We have to recognize the structure of the subject as part and interconnects web of relations responsible for building us and other beings as individuals and as subjects. We are an individual, but we are a part of a whole, integrated, a web of life. And therefore, to make this shift, it's fundamental, a transfer of governance in order to neutralize laws and reorganize the democracy towards effective democracy where money doesn't play the fundamental role. We have also to make producers accountable for the externalities they make. So, we know who make these externalities. We know how destructive and dangerous for life on the Earth it is. So, they must be accountable. That's the reason why we have roads. That's the reason why we respect the law, the legitimacy of law system depends on that. So, we have to empower initiatives for life-friendly alternatives to plastic, improve cultural change by advertising other ways of living more in harmony with nature. It's important that while we, we point towards the responsibles for the death they are causing in the planet, it's also important to show the way out of this situation and turning to, towards the examples of other cultures that were more successful in managing their, our work. It's important that we, so, to point out that decolonizing, decolonizing mechanism is changing, is changing our, our relationship with Mother Earth for production and consumption. So, that's what I want to tell you, and just underline that this process of decolonizing the system, decolonizing institutions, is also decolonizing economies and also is toward another culture. If you think carefully, we are paradoxically the only culture that doesn't consider ourselves as part of a living organism as Earth. We are the only culture on Earth. I say paradoxically because nonetheless, our culture became an agemonic culture that colonized all waters and destroyed our livelihoods. So, we can, we cannot accept that free markets destroys life and liberalism as a policy would never accept that we can call ourselves as free person to destroy our livelihoods. So, that's what I want to say, and thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Christiana, and please bear with us for our last, here. Our last talk, and I've no one. We need some juice in that thing to get you through books. So, we'll close with Emil's presentation. I hope you all will be generous with us as we had the technical difficulties at the beginning and hang with Emil through her presentation, followed by, hopefully, we were at the end of the day, just some, some, some time for a little bit of exchange.
Yep, and it's sharing.
It's already sharing.
All right, thank you. I understand that it's late on a Friday. So, I'm going to continue a little bit of the discussion that we've already heard about nature-culture dualism. And I'm, this is kind of like a collection of, I would say, uncurated thoughts that I've been having around dualism and particular intersectionalities in ecological law as well. And it's more of a passion of mine than my research focus. And I have a picture, actually, of me doing two of my passions, talking about dualism and hiking at the same time to begin the presentation. So, I want to start off with this quote from Rosemary Rutherford, who said that "An ecological ethic must be always an ethic of eco-justice that recognizes the interconnection of social domination and the domination of nature." And this is something that I'll come back to throughout this talk. So, as you've heard from the other speakers, we've had this kind of strong history of human-nature dualism that's evident not only in environmental law, but in culture more generally. And we've got examples of this, such as Plato's Allegory of the Cave, and then, of course, the Enlightenment rationalism and the kind of Descartes mind-body dualism, which really has resulted in a line between humans and nature. The concern here isn't so much that dualisms exist, but rather that these dualisms form hierarchies of power, particularly in the West. And so, nature in this sense becomes a political rather than a descriptive category. And this results in separation domination and accumulation, which has implications for law and governance, particularly because this ontology of separation decides who and what has rights. So, and these are kind of some examples of dualisms that you see in society. So, we have kind of like reason and rationalism, and then the subordinated other is kind of emotion or materialism. We've got culture versus nature. We've got colonizer versus the colonized mind-body, male, female, white, non-white, human, non-human. And so, the master subject is a constructed position of power essentially over a subordinated object. I'm focusing today mostly on the nature-culture dualism, but I recognize that these dualisms are interconnected and interrelated. And so, therefore, I think that we need a more systemic analysis of power and domination within law and society more generally as we shift away from dominant forms of viewing nature into kind of more interconnected holistic way of viewing it. So, as we've heard already, environmental law considers nature as something other. It takes the human as its subject and nature as an object, basically assuming a divide between nature and culture. Nature is abstracted, and it's also considered passive and non-agentic, becoming terra nullius or land belonging to no one. So, a resource empty of meaning and purpose and therefore available for annexation. And also in relation to mining, I guess, also, you know, available to be plundered. And so, an example of this is the way that environmental law has conceived of wilderness areas or its conservation and preservation approach. So, originally, wastelands and wilderness areas were considered not productive and therefore, you know, areas that were, you know, waste essentially. It assumes generally that nobody lives there, or if they do, then they are wired on civilized inhabitants, and these are often indigenous people. So, conservation and preservation law has this idea that these areas of wilderness are pristine, uninhabited, devoid of human activity, and they should be protected that way. And as we've also heard from all of the speakers today, environmental law is insufficient to really address the ecological crisis that we currently face. And the Anthropocene really compels us to address this existential question of human-nature dualism, rather recognize that as humans, we don't operate above or outside the functions of nature, but rather, we are a part of and inherently connected to Earth's ecological systems and bound by these systems. In that sense, law is an extension of ecology. So, a little bit about ecological law, as we've heard today, I particularly like this. I'm just going to go out to my notes. So, as we've heard, ecological law seeks to kind of address many of these deficiencies of environmental law. And so, it really seeks to have a systems approach to law, incorporate ecological limits, reduce material throughput, and fundamentally, for my presentation today, recognize that humans are a part of natural systems. So, instead of having a kind of environmental law system on the left where you have a separation of environmental institutions and Earth systems, we move to a more embedded ecological law idea where we have ecological institutions and the institutions of law and governance embedded within Earth systems. Hopefully, closing that mind-body, sorry, not mind-body, human-nature dualism. And I think also ecological law kind of seeks to reject the idea that we can control nature and take a command and control approach to it, as well as the cult of wilderness or the idea that we should preserve it and restrict humans from going there, and rather, instead, recognize a kind of partnership model where humans are participating members of the Earth community and acknowledge that our own well-being is predicated on the well-being of broader systems. However, I think there is opportunity as ecological law is an emerging discipline to kind of address dualism in ways that also consider the politics of difference domination and intersectionality. Currently, within ecological law, our understandings of ecology are very much informed by scientific inquiry, so that we have an epistemology still of environmental science and rationalism. And I think this kind of risks validating a kind of universal way of knowing, which we may be doing kind of unconsciously in a sense. And Vijay Colin Jivadi recently wrote an article for Ecological Economics talking about dualism in ecological economics. And he wrote that "The failure of ecological economics to understand how nature is culturally produced, politically maintained or altered, risks leaving ecological economics with a shared ontological and epistemological foundation to environmental economics." And I think that's something that we should keep in mind too for ecological law as we go forward. So, as I've said, there are kind of like, these dualisms are intersecting in many kind of various ways as we have these kind of hierarchies of power and domination. And returning to the Rutherford quote that I had at the beginning, I think the ways out of dualism really require us to recognize and consider the various intersections that maintain these hierarchies of domination and control, and also recognize that equity and justice questions really are at the intersection in environmental law. So, taking more than just a single axis analysis. So, I don't, I'm just going to go through some kind of examples which I've come across in the literature around, I guess, methods out of the maze of dualism, as I've called it. And I think first of all, it's like ending colonizing relationships, which we've heard today a little bit around decolonization. So, avoiding the culture and language of the colonizer and master is essential to that. Valoring multiple ways of knowing, recognizing difference, complexity and diversity, problematizing the internalization of nature. And we can do that in many ways within kind of ecological law by looking to other disciplines that have already had a long kind of history of engaging with these topics. So, this includes ecology, biology, and social sciences that are developing more and more research in this area. And I think also ecofeminism is another area which has spent a lot of time kind of trying to understand the nature-culture dualism, and it understands that, you know, this is a relationship that has been politically constructed and therefore seeks to have continuity between humans and non-humans in non-hierarchical ways. And within ecofeminism particularly, and also within the work of Thomas Berry and others, there is a strong focus upon virtue ethics, recognizing that our mechanistic understanding of nature removes the basis for an ethical response to the world and therefore kind of seeks to kind of imbue us with a relational ecological self, one that recognizes that we are formed by and in relation with others through dialectic relationships of kinship and difference. So, an example of this can be like Bon vivier in South America, and it's with the aim of having more kind of place-based, local-based responses. But it does require a new framing of what it means to be human and living in this world. And from a legal point of view, it requires co-evolution. from a legal point of view, it requires co-evolutionary and co-adaptive legal mechanisms. Some other examples include transversal dialogue from ecofeminism, from the science/technology studies, we have active network theory. I'm not gonna go into these too much because I understand that it's Friday afternoon, and if you wanna have a conversation about this, I'm more than happy to at some other point. And I just want to finish on this point too, because I guess I come from a legal background, and I know that some of us here are also from legal backgrounds. And I think there's a really important point around legal or law, legal research positionality. And the comment has been made that legal research, at least from those looking from the outside the discipline of law, appears to be something that lawyers do rather than explain. And I think we can definitely see that in doctrinal research, which is the kind of commonly used methodology for legal research, which doesn't really necessarily explain what we're doing. It's just something that lawyers do, so trust us, everything will be fine. And I think also that there is some significant questions to be raised around a kind of systemic analysis versus a legal equality and a rights-based approach. I think that seeking kind of constant legal equality or rights-based approaches can often result in kind of the continuation and expanding of state violence and control. And rather taking a systems approach, it may be necessary in our work to kind of dismantle legal and administrative systems that perpetrate racialized, gendered, and ecological violence rather than seek, within that rights-based approach, to have more, you know, rights within a kind of still liberal sphere. And I will pass over this, but other than to say that it may be necessary in our research with communities to consider becoming an accomplice, and I think Jen Govey talked about this yesterday actually in Ecological Economics, being an accomplice rather than an ally to community. So recognizing that you are, you know, as a researcher situated and embedded within systems of knowledge as well as community, et cetera, and ecology, of course. So in this case, being an accomplice, you work together, and it may result in bringing, you know, politicizing and complicating environmental practice and sharing access to the institutions of law and science, but also recognizing that it may be necessary to, you know, to basically not hold the law and forms of science and knowledge as being binding or absolute, but rather seek alternatives. So in summary, dualism, it's problematic. Oh, why did it go forward? Anyways, when it reinforces hierarchies of domination and oppression. Environmental law is dualistic. Ecological law has the promise to transcend dualism, but it must be conscious, and we have intersectional methods to navigate the maze out of dualism and build the discipline of ecological law. Thank you.
Well, I wanna thank all of the presenters again, and maybe we'll just jump right into some comments or questions if we have them. And if we run out of time for that, I just wanna invite all of you to be in contact with me. Let me see if I can. And I'll just put this up again. You wanna jot down my email address if that's of interest, if you wanna follow up in any with me or any of the other presenters today, because we are running a little out of time, but not completely out of time. So if you'll be generous enough to stay with us for a few more minutes past the closing time, we'll entertain your questions.
Jeff, as you know, in the US, we've been, me, meaning the Department of lawyers and policymakers, have been looking for the next generation of departmental law for the past 20 years, and it's remained elusive. There are those of us who have come to the conclusion that reframing the existing US statutory regulatory framework in terms of sustainability would be a good path to follow. I will concede that I am among them and have spoken often about that. Here, I'm talking to people who are aficionados of ecological law. So will those of you who believe that we need to move to ecological law be happy or at least satisfied if we're able to move the needle in the US from the existing single-media air-water-waste model to a more systems approach, which calls for an integration of environmental protection, economic development, and social justice? Or is that not good enough for the proponents of ecological law?
Well, you know, I think that can be a lot of discussion. And really, I think that, so you might have noticed that you didn't see the word sustainability a lot today. And I know that for me and maybe others is that there's concern that that's been a co-opted term. So, you know, I think I and a lot of other people in this community don't see those as co-equal pillars, that the economic pillar has this one non-negotiable thing, which is insistence on growth. And a lot of the thinking behind ecological law and ecological economics, the pre-analytical vision, is that you have to get away from that insistence. You can end up with something that's agnostic to it. You don't care about growth as long as these ecological security and social justice elements are achieved. And then there's a more pragmatic, realistic thing that says, look, we've already passed boundaries, and so it really needs, at least for a while, to be degrowth and an explicit rejection of growth, at least in certain ways. So I think the conversation really has to take account for those things. And the other thing is to say, maybe that conversation really has to happen in this very murky sometimes box called transition, where, you know, there are some people in this ecological economics community, both communities, that would really just like to wipe out the current system and immediately put in a new set of institutions and way of thinking. That's not how systems work. There is going to be a transition. What goes in there and whether things like what we call sustainability law, if there's things that are a little uncomfortable, if there's an intention to see certain things as transitional. You might even say that about degrowth. You might say it about ecological economics. If some of the building blocks of those movements are based on problematic elements of what exists today, an example, monetary valuation of ecosystem service, is there a built-in exit mechanism from those problematic elements that people can have confidence in? I don't know if anyone else wants to share any thoughts on that, but that would be my take.
I could just add that in addition to the radical, I guess, if it looks radical that proposing a totally different system, there's a further critique that says that even ecological law would not be enough to achieve the change that we need because it's still law that depends on the state. And that is profoundly problematic too. So anyway, I took that to some help. Your question, but...
Well, again, the point of my question was not to spark a multi-hour discussion. It was what, at the most basic level, is there a fundamental disagreement with the sustainability approach by those who embrace the law, where it's a non-starter. And what I take from Jeff's answer, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, is that understanding this, there needs to be a transition period. And I also call for a transition to sustainability. So I'm all with you on sustainability, on transition. It's not gonna happen overnight. But you're saying that if sustainability approach can move us along the continuum to ecological law, that you're okay with that. And again, I'm asking this question because I am trying to pragmatically look at it in the run-up to 2020. And as some of you in the room know, I'll be doing a briefing for house staff in two weeks, and I'm trying to figure out what I can incorporate from this discussion into that briefing.
Yeah, I mean, I think, just, and I'm not sure, but what I think, I think I'm on safe ground saying that what you need to know is that the elephant in the room that a lot of people in a conference like this, in the degrowth movement, in conversations about ecological law, are no longer, are really getting impatient of ignoring is the growth insistence, is the non-negotiability of that. And at the same time, I think I and I suspect everybody recognizes the political suicide that some people can feel they're gonna be committing if they take that on in the wrong way at the wrong time. But there is that impatience, and it is, I think, the center of the potential sticking points. So that's tough work, but I think the conversation really at some point has to get to that. And maybe if you're talking to house staff, you're gonna have to find ways around that, but that kind of point in that direction if you wanna carry forward a message that comes from a group like this. Does that make sense, Christiana?
I don't see a transition point. My point of view is that we can't stay with the word sustainability, because it's a word. The content must change. We don't agree at all, these three pillars, because there is more three pillars. So economic and social, okay, but ecological or environment is not a pillar. It is the ground. So everything comes from the ecological point. So we may also, there are some literature about strong sustainability. I think it is a kind of transition, because I won't be pragmatic. But one thing that I contest, so I challenge very much, is that when we talk about sustainability, it's important to understand that we can not put three pillars with different things. So the economy and society is a social, it's a cultural thing, whereas environmental is something that everything depends on. So we have to change this approach.
Well, I really appreciate the question. It's a real tension there. Of course, transitions and paradigm shifts take generations. And I don't think that we can, as you said, this kind of change doesn't happen overnight, but also it does happen overnight very recently because it's a fundamental switch of values and values systems and understandings of the nature reality of our place of humans within reality, and so on and so forth. But this kind of positioning those ideas is actually a network remembering that they were already part of longstanding propositions that need to be part of the conversation. But I understand the pragmatic dimension and the urgency to be vocal about what needs to be done. And that, in that particular level, which is a policy level, I think there is more agreement with it than disagreement. But we need to be transitioning into something else. But also, there are some aspects of it that need to be radicalized. And by that I mean going to the roots. And I think that what you're saying is actually about going to the roots. Instead of thinking about pillars or something that is sustainable, it's embedding society, embedding the economy with larger socio-economic relations. And I think that's one of the most important premises of ecological law. It's a real, at least conceptual transformation that needs to be happening.
I wanna, I guess, on a practical, you know, you're focusing on this, this thing, just to go a little beyond what I said before. I think you can, there are things out there that encapsulate a lot of the issues that we're talking about in ecological law that avoid, you know, the G-word. For example, the Earth Charter. And, you know, you could take a look at that and see if that responds, because that really was, was created around the science, the same time as the Sustainable Development. It's a lot of what, you know, the civil society sector wanted to see and didn't get in 1992. So, you know, you could look through that again and see what elements of there are we maybe now ready for that the people weren't ready for in 1992. You know, that would be one example. I think also strong sustainability, other framings, Klaus Boselman's book, The Principle of Sustainability, he uses that word, and he really says, well, it's time to recognize sustainability as a core principle of law, along with things like freedom, injustice, and so on. So you can, I think, find some good ideas out there that avoid, you know, the direct tap on assistance on growth, but it's important, I think, to walk out of here knowing that that's a really a big issue.
If I may, just one little point that I would push back on for those who are saying that what's wrong with sustainability is that it relies on the four pillars. I would be quick to agree with you that if sustainability was just about saying there are three pillars, then that would be wholly inadequate. But if you listen to me carefully, give my definition of sustainability, it started with the integration of those three dimensions. And it's the integration, which is where law and policy, I think, needs to come in. And of course, three completely separate pillars doesn't get us there. So I do recognize the other distinctions that you've made, and I appreciate that, but carefully, I'm emphasizing in all of my presentations, not that we need sustainability as three pillars, but it's the integration, it's the process of operationalizing sustainability that's important.
Thank you. I mean, you have, there are unfortunate things like the Sustainable Development Goals, with goal number eight. I mean, there would have been an opportunity. And I, you know, when I've been in conversations like this, I'm like, well, do you have to use the word growth? Can you use a word there or a concept there that is more flexible and doesn't insist on growth? So, you know, the fact is, a lot of the understandings that have now started to concretize around sustainability, Sustainable Development, really include that insistence. Sure, cheers, sir.